Be with those in our country, in our military, and just guide them and bless them. Again, we pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
What is the symbol of the United States of America? And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call Cheryl.
Bailey?
Here.
Bassett?
Here.
Beverly?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Eggly?
Here.
Before we get started with the council meeting, I wanted to go ahead and move forward with, we have a number of years of service for the village, and then Val and Gary are here tonight, but in case they don't want to stay for the meeting, they're all welcome to go. We were going to give this to them earlier, but some of the years of service recently we've had was, Samantha Sell has five years of service, Austin Henderson, five years of service, Bill Murphy, 15 years of service, Ross and Becker, five years of service, Garrett Franz, 10 years of service, and most of all, you know, stand up, Val, Gary. We got something special. Val and Gary retired from our Parks Department here this year, and Val has 37 years of service, and Gary has 34 years, so I'll give them a round. For show our appreciation, we bought you a gift. You won't come up your way.
Please.
Just a plaque, a clock, and everything for your service. Thank you again for the years and dedication you add to the community and the next program. All right, next on the agenda, we have, tonight we have with us Justin Kuhn and Erica. They want to do a presentation of the week.
Sure. Well, thanks for, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I'll make a motion to approve the amended.
Oh, agenda, my fault. My second. Now, roll call. Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, okay, Gary.
No, no problem. Well, thanks for having us here tonight. I know I've talked about this a lot when we've met before, about how we have a real need for housing throughout our county. There's so many different things that point to why we need housing. One, to grow Hicksville. You know, I've talked with school superintendent. He has a waiting list from people from Indiana and other places that want to come to Hicksville because you guys have such a nice school, they like the area, but there are no available, like, market rate houses. In addition to that, and it's something that honestly terrifies me, keeps me up at night, is the fact that I have a metric dashboard at Mayor knows this, and we track all the new jobs that are coming in. They typically have a three-year ramp-up time, but this year alone, we have over 500 new high-paying positions coming in to Defiance County. That does not include several different expansions that I'm currently working with in Hicksville that would have several new jobs, and I want to say several, I'm talking in the 150th range that would happen, you know, three to five years out. So, it's stacking up, and we don't have the housing inventory. So, and then I need to say this before I bring up Mr. Kuhn. One of the other things that the mayors and I have been following is something that Commissioner Mick Kratsky is trying to do, and that is set up a countywide incentive program. What that would mean is the county putting in some kind of money and trying to figure out how we can come up with an incentive for market rate housing. We have, there's incentives at the state for low-income housing, affordable housing, but we don't have anything for market rate. And when we're doing economic development, we have this threshold. It's usually around the $25 an hour or higher position. So, what that means is, a lot of times, the people that are coming in or re-recruiting, a lot of times the executive teams, they want to live in market rate housing, the 250 and higher homes, and we just don't have that. So, with that, we have a meeting. The commissioners are open to entertaining things. They're working with an attorney to explore how we can set this up, and I think we're just in that exploring stage, trying to figure out how we can do this because we do need housing so badly. With that, Mr. Kuhn is in the process of looking at the Kaduk property, which I know you guys are all aware of that, and he would like to explain some of the findings that he's done. He's done a lot of research, and he's looking to potentially do a housing development that I think would really set Hicksville on the right course. Again, this meeting tonight is really just to explore the opportunity, no decisions to be made, but really to see if, hey, is this something, this road we want to go down and see how we can put together a collaboration, a partnership possibly with the village, the commissioners, and Mr. Kuhn and his team. So, that's what it is tonight. It's really just to kind of pitch the idea and see if we can make this work. So, with that, I'll bring up Mr. Kuhn.
So, as you guys see and heard, I'm in a process of purchasing the Kaduk farm. I feel it's probably the best development opportunity of growth for the ground in Hicksville. It's on the right side of town, it's a nice big parcel, it's got close access to the park. What I feel we need to do is figure out a way where we can both work together, and I, and the county commissioners. The problem with housing in small-town America is, it needs to be affordable housing where people can obviously afford the homes, but the infrastructure cost is so much money to put in. What I wanted to do, and some of you guys might be able to answer this, I'm asking a question of, when we, who put in Industrial Park Drive? Does anybody know or when it was put in? And the reason I ask that is because if nobody ever put in that road, we would have no place for factories to build. And I don't know who put it in, if the county put it in, the town put it in, but that's similar to what I think we need to do with the housing. And as you guys see on the print that I have given you, I think we need to figure out a way to put a street to the Kaduk property, and basically sidewalks on each side of it that lead to the park and lead to State Route 2. And then what that will do is open the property to put off Callas, Sacks, and Spurs to build housing. I went and I've met with home builders in Fort Wayne, Kircoff Homes, and D.R. Horton, and they're willing to commit 20 homes out of the gate. We have to figure out together how we can build affordable housing and affordable infrastructure. I know that the Kaduk property is very close, and people that aren't into development and don't understand the depths of sewers and lift stations and stuff think, well, it's great, it's easy, just hook in. The sewer depth almost surrounding the whole property is five foot deep, which is very shallow, so, you know, one more foot, you're up in the freeze. So, that being said, the property needs a lift station. So, as you all know, and you're probably getting what the knowledge stations are expensive, I've had my engineer design the road to meet the Ohio transportation code with the stone base and put the curb in the gutter, try to make something nice for Hicksville. And I feel if we built something, it would set up growth for Hicksville for the next 15 to 20 years.
Any questions?
Does anybody know when that industrial park, the road went in?
Yeah.
It was in when I started, I'm gonna say early 90s, and I think the village bought the land and developed.
They bought that, it was the old glory farm, and then I think it was John Burckell bought it, had the option, and then the village bought it from him.
Yeah, that's right.
It was a dead end for a while before they extended it.
Right. Yeah, I went down and did a cul-de-sac, I remember, for years, and then eventually carried it out. I'm not here tonight to argue, I'm just telling, I'm just asking, how can we work together? Because I feel we need to, we need to work together and try to get Hicksville some housing. And every small town has got the same problem. The problem is, is I feel we're so close to Fort Wayne, Indiana, that, I mean, lots of supplies come right out of Midwest tile over in Woodburn. The infrastructure cost is the exact same to put it in Indiana or put it in Hicksville. The difference is, the lots in Hicksville cost $50,000, and the lots in Leo, I sold some for $350,000. So, big difference for the exact same cost. That's why a lot of developers aren't beating down the doors of small-town America. So, I feel there's a need for the community to financially get involved. So, what we talked today to the commissioners was, as you guys see the price, if you take the two numbers on the back sheets, one's for the road and one's for basically to run sanitary sewer and water all the way down through the connectment from Spencerville to State Route 2. Let's see if you guys are interested in participating in running a main road, and then leaving it up to developers to put spurs off that road.
In participating, you're saying, put it in?
No, I'm saying, I'll, here's what I think we need to do. Because I think if you guys put it in, that road will cost you $5 million because of prevailing wage and all that stuff. What I propose to you guys is I buy the ground, I put the road into basically the specs with private money, and then you guys buy it back from me.
Which we still have to, we still have to see if we can do that legally.
But we, we're 99% sure we can?
Well, I don't know. Today, in the meeting, they said that they wanted to check with their attorney.
But then you guys, and the way I would like to see it work is you guys get reimbursed back to the TIF. Any homes that face that street, because like the street, you guys get the taxes, you, obviously, guys will get the sewer, you guys will get the water bills. You guys will make revenue off that, so that'll help cover the main throwaway through there to reimbursement for your money. Then any Callas, Sacks, or Spurs off of it, and we work together and figure out the TIF on that.
Are there any homes, the picture that I see, it looks like all of them are off the Spurs. So, these with the.
What I truly think, the one that I drew there was D.R. Horton Homes. Do you guys know D.R. Horton? They're building in Woodburn, they're a lower-end builder, they're what they call affordable housing. I don't think affordable housing needs to be on the main street. So, Kircoff Homes is a higher-end house. What I think we need to do is together, work together, and not try to hide anything where all the houses are off the Spurs and the town doesn't get any money. We need to put, in my opinion, more higher-end homes on the main street, and then put mounting on the backs and duck some of the D.R. Horton-style homes back in there. I mean, I don't want, we don't want to put a street in and put low-income housing when you drive down through there. I think those need to be nicer, if that makes any sense. D.R. Horton, I met with them, and they said they'd commit 20 homes right out of the gate.
What type of dollar value is on a Horton home?
About 250 to 300.
That's not cheap, though.
No, there is no cheaper. There is nothing cheaper than a Horton home.
No, but I mean, for that kind of money, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, that's not bad. If you guys go down Schwartz Road from basically Central Church going towards Leo, there's a couple of D.R. Horton developments right there. They're basically just hip roof houses, double four siding. I mean, they're by no means dumps, but as you guys know, everything is expensive. Kircoff Homes, I'd say, is more of a medium grade. They're building in Woodburn, they're building in New Haven, being worth. I think those are the ones that we work a deal with them, and we start putting them on the front streets, and then you guys collect the tax money off that to pay it back to the TIF. I think it would look nicer going down the road having a little higher-end homes. And again, this is just talking. It's like, how can we make it work?
I think the next step would be for the council, if you're interested in proceeding, the council and the commissioners and Mr. Kuhn getting together, along with an attorney that Commissioner Kratsky's been engaged with, along with Mommy Valley Planning. He's an expert at doing the TIFs and setting up programs, like I mentioned, and just seeing how we can make it work. So, like, with the TIF, let's say the commissioners contribute something. They can get that reimbursed, but you can do a joint TIF where if you guys decide to participate financially, you can recoup some of that money, so can the commissioners. So, you can really lay out the TIF to make sure that you get reimbursed. It's not a short game, it's a long game, and I think it could be very beneficial for the community if all the numbers work out. So, like, there's probably still some investigation that needs to be done on all, like, the infrastructure, like fiber and electric and all that. So, all that stuff needs to be evaluated, and we would have, I know Mommy Valley, Dennis Miller's been attending those meetings as well. He would need to take, do a model to make sure it would pencil out right.
Well, I think we definitely should talk.
What kind of timeline are we looking at?
Sooner the, sooner the better. I got the property under contract until August, but as you guys know, it takes time and time and time. So, I would like to, I said January 31st, which is probably unrealistic. Tonight, basically, do we want to continue talking, or are you guys like, no way, we're not putting any money in, we're out? If you guys say we're out, county commissioners say we're out, then I'll probably just sell the farm to an Amish guy. If not, if we're, can talk and try to figure it out and work together, where it's a win-win for all of us, which I think we can, then I can, we can keep talking and working together.
Well, we need it.
We need it.
And we've, you know, we keep putting it on the back burner, and something's gotta happen, whether it's you or anybody else, we need to sit down and talk to somebody.
I feel, and you know, people are gonna talk and this and that and the other, but I feel that I'd probably financially contribute myself around $2 million. So, a million, 1.1 for the ground, and then if I put a spur in and we do the D.R. Horton style, that'll probably cost a million for the infrastructure. I'm comparing it to the numbers in Leo for the size, because not only you got to put the infrastructure up, you got to build the building pads and take all the dirt, turn it, compact it, put in retention ponds. So, what I'm saying is, I would probably put in roughly $2 million of it. What I would like to try to see happen, and I'm just being honest, is if the number for the road and the sanitary sewer and everything's 1.6 and 1.7, you guys put in 800, and the county commissioners put in 800, and now we have growth for Hicksville for the next 20 or 30 years. And the way we keep the number low is let myself put it in privately, and then when it's all done and completed, say 30 days after everything needs specs and it's done, you guys come back and buy it for open books of what we have in it, and that'll keep you out of the prevailing wage and the labor and have to go to all the, turn it into a $3 million.
Can we still be involved in the prevailing wage during another TIF?
That is.
No.
That, I mean, we do need to, I'm not an attorney.
I've talked to my attorney.
Well, I've heard conflicting things on that, so I definitely. So, I think that we, we need to also bring some, bring your attorney, and we'll have the commissioner's attorney that was outside council, and I don't know if that was hired by Mommy Valley Planning, but I think we bring them together because I get conflicting information.
The TIF plan is the most fair thing to do for everybody involved. If it's, if it's, you know, doesn't involve the prevailing wage.
Right.
If it's prevailing wage, then.
It kills it.
It kills everything.
That's the problem with a small-town America, I mean, it's not, it's us, every small town.
Everything, yeah.
We all together need to, hate say, to find the loopholes and think outside the box of how we can make it work at a reasonable rate.
Set a date, let's put something together.
Okay, we'll try to get something set.
Doesn't cost anything to talk, right?
Council, kind of all in favor of listening, go and move forward a little bit.
I'll try to get something set up early January. Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you very much. We have approval of amendments from December 2nd. Make a motion to revise it on the 2nd. Roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
You got bills, payment listing in your packet, approve all that.
Cheryl, on the first page of the bill for $5,500, $5,567. West Bank, operating supplies, what's that represent?
West Bank is Marathon. Deal.
Several months, two or three or four, five, six months, two months? Okay. Lead back for $6,800, what in the world did we do to that?
I got a new clutch pressure plate, throw-out bearings, tubing, a new fan, and bearings for the fan.
And then I seen where your notes, it said that parts came in, but you said it's all done, and then the next statement, it said all the parts came in, can't put them on yet?
The fan's the only thing that hasn't been.
Okay, okay. And the other one is Axon Enterprise, Inc., $8,900. What is, what is that?
Axon, that's our five-year contract for our body parts.
Ah-ha. And that, that $8,900 covers for how long?
Five years, so it's, that's probably the second payment, second yearly payment, right? Cheryl.
That's the only questions I have. Pay the bills unless somebody has something else?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Eggly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Boards and commissions, notice of public hearing in your packet. Questions, concerns on that?
Where's the sign variance? Where's that at? The camp building out on East High Street. Is it one of these yards? You know, neon or? Yeah, L C D or LED screen out there.
Could be what he wanted to do at Marathon, but he said do it up there.
Yeah, kinda like where the ODOT sign was. I know ODOT have been involved with it, and they've already relocated their sign to accommodate.
Any question, more questions on that?
What's it gonna put on the sign? I mean, what's the sign all about?
As far as I know, it's advertisement for his business. Because he could have picked the one right over here on the corner.
For his business or for the guy that's out there in the shop?
I think it's for his. But at least that's what he is, Phil Jared and I. Whether it'll have advertisements on it for other people, I don't know.
He doesn't do any of the trashy, so. Okay.
Moving forward, committee reports, water, sewer, and personnel committee report through your packet.
I have, was contacted by Cory regarding a project that's gonna go on out on High Street, and they were gonna have a wet well type of overflow water dispersal, just all in the ground and rock, and Cory didn't like it, and when he talked to me, I didn't like it. And Cory gave the landowner an option that included him piping over to the storm sewer and not having a weed harvest there in the middle of the parking lot. Landowner talked with the people, he had to go through their property, they agreed to it. So, it's a done deal. I mean, Cory mentioned it, I agreed with it, I talked to the landowner, and he loves it, so everybody's happy, and we've got a much better deal. Thanks for bringing that to our attention, Cory.
Fix the problem, right?
Problem's done. And we didn't have to have a meeting or anything.
How do you get on that committee?
You're on it.
Water, sewer. We have administrators' report.
They don't have anything to add other than, wants to front you there, wants to add to it.
Rachel's not here tonight, so there's none, we have no legislation to pass. We're up to department heads, Chief Dennis?
I don't have anything.
Bruce?
Just a couple things. A gentleman that you guys agreed to last month, his name was Eric McLean, he's with us tonight. He came over to do some ride time with us tonight, so he's gonna be starting. He's already certified and everything. Last week, we had to get new tires put on 510. Yeah, because there was a big piece of metal in one of the back tires. So, I talked to Cheryl, and Cheryl was like, mm, okay. But we were also down to 830 seconds of tread, so. And I talked to Brian out there, and he's like, some of these bigger, some of these bigger trucks, they go through tread pretty quick, so. But other than that, we have, I have been mandating people that are crews wear a mask for anything respiratory that we get dispatched for, because unfortunately, COVID, RSV, and pneumonia has made a really big appearance here in our area. So, I'm not saying that everybody needs to be wearing a mask, but just be aware of it. You know, and trust me when I say I didn't want to, I didn't want to do it, but, you know, with the amount of sickness that's been going around, I didn't really have a choice. Other than that, that's all I have, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Fire department?
No.
No clue.
Not a clue, thank you, Rick. We have fiscal report.
The usual reports, you also have the November utility and inter-tax report. Mayor's Court and PD has a collection also to mine. And I have one question, because this is the last one of 2024. I have about a bunch of bills that are gonna come in between now and January. And ordinarily, wouldn't be a problem, I would just pay them with the next leading up when they get approved. However, this is 2024, it'll be 25. All of the department heads do not want to take them out of 2025's budget. They want to pay it this year. Well, what are you going to do?
Pay them.
Pay them.
Do you just need us to?
Make a motion to pay the bills for next?
I need you to approve for me to pay them. You will get them, but the, you're appearing to pay without saying.
There you go.
Well, then you vote no.
How you want to do it? You want to just let the.
Not a special meaning?
Was it a straw vote? Is that what?
Near's even?
Are you paying, are you saying they can't?
Was this a motion? Did they motion?
Hang on, I got a question. Are you saying they can't pay them because they don't have money in this year's budget? Or you give us what permission to pay them?
In 2024's budget, not 2025's budget.
Okay, well, that's how I would do it. I thought you were gonna have to scrape money up somewhere to pay them.
Well, we'll have to do that too, but.
That's how you're gonna do what? How, what do you, you've lost me.
See, cleared it up for me, so.
Okay, all right.
2024 money.
You had to.
She might have moved some money around if something's out of.
Right.
One item.
I would have to do that.
Sure, yeah.
Roll call.
So, it's official motion? You guys have a motion?
Yeah, we got that.
She's not gonna pay anything out of the ordinary.
Roll call. They made a motion.
I did.
Somebody did.
I didn't.
He did, he seconded.
All right, Bailey?
Yeah.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
The department heads, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I do have something to bring up. Do you guys all look at the reports? One thing that I want people to realize is line item number five, about drying beds. We did rebuild those drying beds, but we do take a lot more, I mean, the plan is producing a lot of sludge. We are having a hard time getting the sludge out, even in the summertime, with those old drying beds. We are in the process of getting some engineering numbers and prices to get a sludge press put in there that can run and get rid of that. I mean, we're still in 1940s, 1950s technology back there with the drying beds, so.
It was.
Other communities?
Other communities, I mean, drying beds are a thing of the past, we still use them, we would still retain a couple of drying beds for emergency purposes. But, you know, but if we're talking about building more homes in the future, we've got to, we've got to roll on this.
Would that help with those sludge removal prices as well? I mean, we spend a lot of money.
Yeah, because a lot of that sludge, I mean, we call it dry sludge or cake, it's almost like cake batter, but any moisture content in it just adds to the weight of that dumpster when they haul it out, so.
The group out here, they, they had no interest in it whatsoever.
They cannot take human.
Oh, yeah?
Out there, the environment here? Yeah, I tried.
You're going to go out and try to go after that sludge press again this year?
Next year, one of the Myers and one of the Barrs. Yeah, we, we would have the funds to purchase one, but I want to wait to see what we get grant-wise beginning of the year for, for defining that project.
What's one of those cost?
You know, from three to $400,000.
Plus you'd have to have engineering on it, plus you'd have to set it.
What we're looking to, to do is the back of the septic receiving building. I mean, septic receiving, you know the number off the top of your head, how much money has came in just with septic receiving?
Not off the top, but it's a lot.
So we're over 20?
Oh, yeah, because it's like six to eight thousand never been.
So we, we make, we make pretty good funds with septic receiving, just, and it's just one guy that comes in and dumps. But the back half of that building, there's a huge tank that could be used for the polymer and that back half of the building is like untouched. It's never really been used since it was built. So we would look to add the press, put the press into there.
In the one that sets up on the hill?
Just right past the office. Where they would cut their tankers and they pump into that building, the back half of that building. So it's a little bit engineering, potentially put in a smaller addition to cover, depending on what size press we would have to use, you may have to add on to that building a little bit. It'd be very, very, very beneficial.
Right, and plan for the future. Not what we need now, but we're going to need, correct, Mark?
With the EPA findings, though, Cory, I'm going to switch topics here, did they, did they find that we have fewer CSOs, SSOs going into the plant? I know with the head of the plant, it's not an issue, right? But the whole goal with all this EPA long-term improvement plan is to cut all those back, is that what?
Correct.
Don't want to do phase three.
Other than the CSO that's the head of the plant, we still, I still think with some redesigning with the gate that's on the front of that plant, we can eliminate not all of them, but a handful of them, just the way it's set up.
We're coming into more compliance.
Yeah, I mean, it's, CSO-wise, we're doing pretty well, the best we've done in a handful of years with it. But we've done a lot of stormwater removal.
Oh, yeah?
That was our goal. Anything else? Okay. You guys want to, you guys are good, just listen?
Okay.
Well, if we don't have anything more for council, Cory? I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I appreciate your time, your efforts in the village, the residents out there that are watching or listening, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to you also. And we thank you for this year's service. I am working on committees, I'll get with each guys this week and let you know if I made major changes, but I'm changing a couple of things around, that's it. But I will get with you and we will see you next year. I would say Merry Christmas.
Hey, I want to.
I'll say that.
I want to thank everybody for, you guys made a donation, memorial donation for my daughter, and I want to thank y'all for that and thank everybody for sending cards and stuff. And that's all.
Good, thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Second? I have three seconds.
Sorry, I didn't have three hundred or nothing.
But someone wants to change this one. Bailey?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Edley?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Maybe.
Yeah, maybe.